Start the September 28th, 2020, City of Twolton Work Session. Today, we have three items on our work session agenda. The first one being a fun one, the very exciting Twolton Moving Forward Bus Tour and quarterly update. Everybody, is this Jeff, Megan and crew?
And Kelsey.
And Kelsey.
Take it away, guys.
We haven't seen you in a while.
We haven't physically, we haven't physically seen each other since March. Other than on Zoom, our new reality, so.
We lost than we did in March.
So I'm going to try and share my screen with you. I think we have all the technical challenges worked out. There's going to be some video with some sound. Bates and I worked on it today to make sure that I think the sound, you'll be able to hear the sound through my computer. So it should play just fine. So with that, I'm going to share screens. Bates, can you please enable screen sharing?
Sorry, it's enabled now.
Thank you. Like, wait a minute. All right, can everybody see my screen? Great. We want to know whether the sound works until we get about a couple of slides in, and then we'll have some video, and then we will know. And Megan is standing by with the same PowerPoint presentation loaded as well, so if the whole world collapses on us, Megan will save us. That's our plan. So, so with that, we'll get started. So Jeff Foxwell, the Works Director here tonight with Kelsey Lewis, the Deputy Program Manager for the Bond Program. And I created a background with her driving a bus. I'm not sure that she's a great driver, but we'll find out. So with that, we'll dive right in. See, just give us. Yes, so last year, about the same time, we were on the bus, and it was pretty darn fun. Now, we got to drive around the city and hang out together, clearly closer than six feet, and clearly nobody was wearing a mask. The world has changed a teeny bit this year. So in honor of our bus tour, we put you all on the bus. Which this is probably my favorite slide in our whole presentation, because I just think it's, it's pretty darn awesome. So let's get started. So Kelsey and I are going to take turns tonight. Each time we go to a stop, there'll be a map, and you can see the overall kind of what's next. And we'll try and transition this as smoothly as possible. Kelsey will be often saying, "Next slide," or "Jeff, wake up," or something to that effect, to try and get my attention, so I can advance the slides. And I think it'll go smooth. The one thing I can say is we probably won't get lost tonight. I don't remember if you remember last year, but we turned to go up to Soletts and Boones, and I was like, "No, no, take a right." I think it's to the left. We got there. So one advantage of a virtual tour is we shouldn't get lost. So. And with that, Kelsey will be our first tour guide, starting at the Twolton Public Library.
That's right. Thanks, Jeff. Again, Kelsey Lewis, Deputy Program Manager and Management Analyst in Public Works. We're so, our first stop is here at the Twolton Public Library. And the reason we're starting here is to showcase the collaboration amongst lots of different staff and committees and our consultants to create sidewalk art stamps for the projects that we've been building as far as, as part of Twolton Moving Forward. So, next slide. This here is showing you the setup in our illustrious library where we have the Makerspace 3D printer, which helps us make these sidewalk art stamps. So this is the beginning of the process where we bring the sidewalk art to life. Next slide. So here is some examples of the stamps, and you can see the, the machine, which is called a Carvy, carving there on the left side, and these are a few of the stamps that we've done so far. Next slide.
Can I pause for a second? Could you hear that sound? Perfect. And the sound works.
I'm not sure I heard the sound, so we'll see. So this one, let's go ahead and play it.
Sorry. Can you hear that?
Nope.
All right, hold on. Let me see if I can get this to work correctly. Bear with me for just a second.
So this is a video of the the Carvy actually functioning, and it's narrated by Doug in the library.
Right. Oh, I know where it is. Hold on just a second. We did this earlier today.
This is this year's version of getting lost.
Yeah.
This is this year's version of getting lost. That's because I said something. Let me get to screen sharing, and I believe I can tell it to share computer sound. I think that's what we want. So let's see if it works.
For its maiden voyage in the Carvy.
Success.
And now, we make sure that the machine is nice and calibrated. At this point, we want to make sure all our settings are correct, including the thickness of the material, making sure it's clamped in properly and positioned and nice and secure, and that we have the right size and type of bit. Each, each will cut differently. And then we get her going, and the first step when the Carvy begins is it has to calibrate and home itself. You'll notice on the clamp in the foreground on the left, there's a small metal insert that the drill has to position, position itself over. And once that's all good to go, it begins carving. And this process to make a stamp of this size takes about four to five hours, depending on the complexity of the design and the depth, which in this case is about a quarter to a third of an inch. And then here we are, the completed stamp. All that's left is to dust it off and take it off the block, and voila.
So that is a pretty interesting video to show you exactly how those are made. Once, once they come out of this machine, which is an awesome demonstration of the Makerspace, by the way, the library staff gives it over to some folks in maintenance to put some, a handle on it. What we've discovered over a couple of these projects is that it's kind of challenging to actually get it into the concrete while it's setting and then pull it back out again. So operations staff makes a handle for it, and then we take it out to the field. So this has been a great collaboration. Wanted to tell you about that. And here we are, just in case you didn't feel like you were really in a tour, we wanted to have a real bus, bus tour experience with getting in a little traffic as we leave the library. You can also see one of our other projects, the Twolton Sherwood Road Martin Azzi to I-5 project there that we're getting started on design.
Were you able to see my mouse when I was? Can you see that?
Yes.
Oh, cool. All right, I can point.
Excellent.
All right. Next slide. So our next stop will be Mohawk, East of Martin Azzi at PGE. That one's mine. I'll be your tour guide. So we won't spend a ton of time here, because we've talked about this site a lot. But what I love about this is it's done. We we started this project as a collaboration with PGE a couple of years ago. We put in a crosswalk and ADA curb ramps. They've got about 500 people that cross back and forth here across Mohawk. And then the Bond Program passed in 2018, and there was a great opportunity to put in RFBs. So you can see those here. So that's at this site. And so this, this project is done. It was an awesome collaboration. And this, you know, Oma doesn't usually pull. I just lied, sorry. Shouldn't lie to council. She pulls occasionally, but she's not walking at her best with Sarah today. All right, on to our next stop, Kelsey.
All right, stop number three. We're going up to Martin Azzi Avenue and Sagert Street, where we are currently almost finished with design of the signal, traffic signal that we're going to put in here. And I went on the field and did a video, so we're going to show that to you. Here we are at the intersection of Martin Azzi Avenue and Sagert Street. As you can see, there's a lot of activity happening here, a number of turning movements, so people turning different directions, pedestrians going by. There is a park and ride at one corner of this intersection. There's also a bus you can see coming here on the 96 route. So a lot of people using transit, walking, trying to get around. And often, there's some confusion about who's supposed to go first with so many different turning and movements forward at this intersection. People aren't sure exactly who's supposed to go when. So certainly, a signal will help with that. And that's what we're looking to do. One of the things we're trying to keep an eye on is the grades, so that people can still see each other, get good sight distance, and just making it a lot easier for everyone to understand when is their turn and, and lessen some congestion in this area. So the amusing thing you might want to know, when I went out there to take some video and, and take some photos of the site as a before photo, I hadn't walked out there myself as a pedestrian, but I, I actually had to shoot the video several times because we, people were flipping me off and swearing at me. So it's, it's an interesting experience as a pedestrian. So I did kind of edit down the video that you got.
And schedule-wise on this, do you want to quickly talk about where we are?
Yeah, we are, we are wrapping up the design portion of it. We're working on right-of-way acquisition right now. So we'll be, our intention is to have this out for construction bid in February of next year, and then we'll start the construction in the spring.
And then the scope of this project is a new traffic signal, new bike lanes kind of over here. Might safer crosswalks, curb ramps, and should be transformed.
Yeah.
Hey, Jeff.
Yes.
We had talked about in the past, as part of the design, elongating some of the turn lanes, particularly the one that's headed westbound. Has that been incorporated into the design?
Yes, it has. So for this project and all of our projects where we're messing around with traffic congestion, we have our traffic engineer, DKS, do an evaluation and figure out how long that turn lane should be. And so they've done that, and so it is longer. And then the other, you know, there's a lot of details, but we're tweaking the grades on this slightly, just to help improve sight distance, and then changing the, it'll look completely different, changing the turn lanes generally on all the legs to provide more storage. And we don't have a map, but heading up the hill, there will be a new right, dedicated right turn lane, a new bike lane, and then a through lane. So it'll be, it will be very, very different than it is today.
Thank you.
All right, our next stop is Marquee Assisted Living, Nusoma Lane. And I will be your tour guide on that stuff. So this is another, one of my favorite projects. It came out of, again, just really good coordination and collaboration with Marquee. And so Mike and I are out onsite on this particular day, talking with Amanda and Jordan and Scott about where they think the crossing should be. So we worked with them to make sure we got it in the right place and that it meets their needs. We don't have a larger picture, but one thing to note on this is there is really, there's a crosswalk at Boones Ferry in Nusoma. And then there's another crossing way down at the end of, of Nusoma. It's and it's really far between crossings. And so we are right behind us here is a community center, and then right across the street is our medical facility. And until we do this project, there's not really a great way to get across the street to get there. So that's what this project is going to do. It's going to provide a mid-block crossing just about right where we're standing, basically extending this, this walkway from the community center across Nusoma with RFBs and making it a whole lot safer and more direct for folks to get across the street. So we do have a short video on this one.
I'm Joel and Dean with OTAC, where we're here on the Twolton Moving Forward Project, using the TSC, the T10 for mapping purposes for sidewalks and curb and gutters.
A little quiet, but these guys did great work. They got in and in there and out of there, got our survey data, so we could do our design. And really help just kind of move that project along quickly. So, and the other thing to note is we will show you, there's, there is the project in construction. This is like, not very many weeks ago. It's done now. And so that's one of the things in this bus tour is on a real bus, we would going, we would be going from finished project to finished project on many of these, because when we started putting this presentation together, they were during, they were still in construction, and these projects are going so quickly that they're done now. So kind of fun to see. This particular project, again, here's the community center, here's the crossing, here's the other side, there's some sidewalk art. Down in the lower left-hand corner to slide, you can see that the artist called Good Boy Dog by Casey Williams, or Casey Wilson, sorry. So that's kind of one of the fun things to see on this whole program, is just seeing the sidewalk art scattered around town. Right? Next stop will be Kelsey's 90th and Kaiser. This one has several videos.
Yeah. So go ahead and, yep, so this one is a little bit of a unique project, because we we chose it specifically related to the pandemic response. We have our, a lot of first responders and medical community out there doing really important work, and we wanted to, in addition to the rest of our community, who we want to have be safe, this is particularly helpful for those folks who are working on the front lines right now. So if we want to go ahead and listen to the video, give you a little feel.
This is the dangerous part. In order to be seen, you have to step all the way out here. So traffic is coming this way.
Oh, I just stopped that. Sorry. I was trying to turn up the volume a bit. It's a little quiet.
Actually, having to put your body in the road for them to stop. Most of them don't stop.
All right.
So this is, if you're not totally familiar with where it is, that the Kaiser facility is very close to Twolton Sherwood Road, so there's a lot of traffic coming off of TS Road, and there a lot of vehicles are going pretty fast. And that's what these Kaiser employees are demonstrating. There's a cameo there for Mike's thumb, which I think makes the video awesome.
And then I think there's
One more video.
There's one more. Turn this up as loud as it'll go.
So tell me what benefits you think you'd see from enhancing this crosswalk.
The main benefit will be employees' safety. As we cross the road, cars frequently don't stop for lots of different reasons. One of those reasons is it's just hard to see. As you come around, as you come around that corner, you may not see somebody who's halfway across the crosswalk. And then you've got Twolton Sherwood Road, where just a ton of traffic comes off that road. So it'll be nice to have a better crosswalk so that folks can see people are walking across it.
Thank you. And how do people use this crosswalk?
Very carefully.
Like, what are you walking to?
Our employee, all the staff here and a lot of the patients will walk across this crosswalk to either go for a walk on our mini trails in the neighborhood, or our patients, there's not a bus line that stops in front of the medical office, so they actually have to go from the other side of this parking lot that's over their way. So there's a lot of people that have to cross this way to get to this facility.
So again, that's an existing crosswalk that we're putting the flashing beacons on, so it'll be safer and easier for folks to see crossing, pedestrians crossing the street.
And that one's done too, right? I think just about.
Yeah, it's just about. I think they're, they're just wrapping up, maybe making sure that all the push-button functions work correctly.
I drove past there today, and it looks done. It may just be punchless stuff.
Yep, exactly.
All right. On to our next stop, and we will have a, I think our next stop is our opportunity for some some snacks and some questions and and hopefully some answers. So so last year, we stopped, if you remember, we stopped at Ballady Park and had pizza, hung out, marched across the new crossing on Sagert Street, and and so this year, we said, "Well, we can't really do that." So I think everyone got a care package from Cheryl and and I think it had some snacks in there. So if you haven't eaten them already, now is a good time. And and I think this is our opportunity for you to ask any questions you have about any of the sites we've seen so far. I can flip to the, to the map. If you have questions about what we've talked about so far.
Questions for Jeff? I can't see everybody. Well, there's I see Valerie and Bridget.
I wonder when you expect to break ground on the Martin Azzi and Sagert intersection without light.
Do you want to take that one, Kelsey, or?
Sure. Yeah, we're anticipating sometime in the, the spring, so not exactly sure of the month yet, but next spring.
Oh, that's great. When I find at that intersections, everybody's so polite, they tell everybody else to go when it causes a bomb.
Just a follow-up to that, and then we'll get to Bridget. We discussed the possible movement of the bus stop. Because a lot of folks say they make that turn, and the bus is right there, and they might run into it. Has Prime Met been consulted yet about moving that stop?
So we've been working with them, I think with the traffic signal. That will, that'll change the character of the intersection and how the bus operates here.
All right, Bridget?
Um, I have three questions. One was, and they may not all be answerable by Jeff. But my first, my, my anyway, first of all, it's very exciting to see the progress. And in that vein, I'm curious if the presentation especially focused on the sidewalk art could be shared with the Arts Committee, because they've worked on the selection process. And I think that it would be very interesting to them to see the video and the information around the sidewalk stamping. That's my first question. Do you want me to do all of them, or do you want me to stop?
I'll let Megan George jump in on that.
Yeah, just really quickly. So our plan is to snip this portion of tonight's video recording from the council meeting out and upload it to YouTube so that we can share the, the virtual bus tour. We've also been collecting photos of some of the sidewalk art. For a few projects, we're going to try to invite the artists out to grab photos and do not quite a full-on ceremony, but some sort of recognition, and then bundle all of that and send it back to the Arts Advisory Committee.
Thank you. That sounds like a great plan. You guys are way ahead of me. And then my second question might be for all of us is I'm curious why we don't have bus transportation stopping at the, at the medical center itself. That seems curious to me. Or if there's a way that we can help make that happen.
I don't know if I have an answer for that tonight. We can get, I can't remember where the bus line runs along there.
It sounds like it goes across the street, and I know at a lot of other hospitals and medical centers, the bus will pull in, especially with people with, you know, mobility issues and things like that. So I'm just curious. I just would like to think about that as a group of us, as leaders. And then my third and final question, which is which is, I, I'm also wondering if I can get a copy of the Twolton City Council bus picture. I'd love that.
I'm sure we can make that happen.
Thank you. And thanks for all the hard work you guys did.
Thank you. All right, no more.
I had one more final question. We, I just want, I was going to save it for council communications, but on the, my last PAB meeting, the, we went over the summary of the CDB, Community Development Block Grant Funding. And I know it was last year's tour, but can you show us where that was on the map? And what, you know, how it helped contribute to, it was nice to hear in the reports for that funding Twolton mentioned and money going towards our community from those block grants and and just a reminder that some of the money is coming towards us and, and where it's going.
Right. So real quickly on this map, can you see my mouse, my cursor? So we got CDVG grant money to essentially reconstruct the sidewalk from about 72nd down to 65th. And so that, that's what we spent those dollars on.
Thanks for helping with my announcement.
Any other questions? Sounds quiet. Take it away.
All right, we've got three more stops, four more stops. So I will advance the slides or step on the gas pedal on the bus.
All right. So our next stop is here at 90th and Sweek. So just up the road from the 90th and Kaiser crossing is this one. This is a, also a crossing and RFB. And there's a pretty cool video, if you haven't seen a sidewalk or concrete being poured. So we'll go ahead and show the video. Looks like that was playing around in the mud, but it's a pretty important process to get it right. And collectively there at 90th and Sweek, they gave us some pretty good shots for our video, which we were pleased about. So they're, they're just forming it up and doing all the things they're going to need to do to make sure that it, it meets ADA, which is an important concern that we look for when we finish that. Two lap, okay.
All right. You want me to go ahead and play these just straight through, Kelsey?
Yeah.
All right. Making it smooth. This is the part I always mess up.
Go, go ahead.
So this is the part I always mess up when I'm pouring concrete for myself. It's never turned out like they do. And then there's one more, right?
I think there is one more.
Yeah.
So yeah, this is one of many projects that started and is complete now. Pretty fast project. You can go by there now. It feels feels all finished. We're just finishing the punch list on a number of projects, including this one at 90th and Sweek. But it's all all finished. You can check it out. And one of the things I learned when I came to this area just to get some photos is how how much, how much traffic and how many people there are parked in this area. So it's it's great to have a crossing that people can get in ground as pedestrians.
Yeah, I'll add just a couple of other things. So the RFBs here, new curb ramps, this crosswalk looks totally different now. It's continental striking when you go out there. There's a lot of folks live over here in these condominiums and apartments. And then this is really the direct route to community park. All right. Next stop is on Twalton Road. We're staying between 105th and 115th, closer to 112th and 115th. And so this one, again, we took these photos just not very long ago, a couple of weeks ago. They they went really fast. So it's basically done. So this is at 112th. There was an existing crosswalk here. If you've driven out there or walked out there, you know that it's really hard sometimes to see people, cars sometimes drive a little bit too fast. So this will really provide a safe crossing for folks to get across the street. The RFBs will let them stop traffic before they cross. And so they, there's a center island right there and they reconstructed that to meet ADA standards. New curb ramps to this cross or this sidewalk in this side is one of the wider sidewalks. You get to about 10 feet wide. So essentially is is a trail and then it can cross here to get across the street. And it looks completely different today. So if you get a chance to drive around, you will see, you will recognize it from these pictures. All right. And this also has sidewalk art. And I love this picture. So there's Mike McCarthy, the proud dad and the artist Timothy McCarthy. And his art called Happy Deer. So I was super happy they laid down on that sidewalk to get this selfie. So pretty darn fun. And down in the corner, you can see the original drawing. And you can see how it turned out in the concrete. All right, a couple more stops. So this one's pretty exciting. And Kelsey is going to be our tour guide at Garden Corner Curves.
Yes, indeed. So we have, we also have a guest speaker for this who you know. Of course, we you've councils heard much about this project. We're very excited that construction has now begun. And some some work will get done this fall. And then we'll have a little bit of a pause for for the winter and then it will start up again and be completed next year. And there's Uma, being a very good dog. She normally would be on the sidewalk. And since there's no sidewalk, she's suggesting that we put sidewalk here, which is part of the plan. And then we'll go to the next slide. And here, one of your illustrious colleagues is going to give us a little bit of an introduction to this project. He did a great job.
I'm turning up the volume. All right.
I'm Robert Kellogg from the Twelton City Council, here to explain the Garden Corner Curves project. This project was born in 2012 when members of the IBAC Citizen Involvement Organization petitioned the city to do something about the road that you see behind me. There is no room for bike paths and pedestrians have a very dangerous time coming through this corner. It separates two neighborhoods and drivers have had a couple of crashes on this road due to dangerous conditions. The project improvements are going to include a multi-use path for bikes and pedestrians, as well as widening the roadway and pedestrian improvements to ensure the safe crossing of this road. The city very much looks forward to completing this project with this first step. Ground broken.
So this is, this is where your your care package is is useful. We would love for you all to take part in this virtual groundbreaking. That's, that's what the bucket in the sand is about. So we're all very excited and hope you are too. I can see Counselor Kellogg. Yep. Oh, I can see your shovels. Excellent. We wondered about many different ways to do a groundbreaking for this project. And although this isn't what we, of course, any of us would have planned, we're still really excited about it. And Counselor Kellogg, we're all very impressed that you did that video in one take. It's pretty awesome.
Well, you can't see the cue card, so it wasn't that impressive.
So
all for playing along with your shovels and pails. It's a fun picture from here. So thank you.
It is. Ground broken. All right, Kelsey, back to you.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, for seeing us be part of it. It's fun for us.
Good. That's, that's the idea. We're wanting, we really wanted this virtual bus tour to feel as inclusive as we could make it. So we're happy to hear that.
So there's big hugs, big everybody for groundbreaking. Big hugs.
Virtual hugs.
Yeah.
So these are some construction photos of work actually going on out there. So on the left, you can see a big saw cutting machine. So this is what they do when they're getting ready to do utility work. Or other work where they want to save some of the pavement and get rid of some of the other pavement. So one of their first items of work out there is installing a storm sewer. And so they saw cut out the trench lines, go in there and excavate it out and and then install the pipe. And you will see a lot of this out there right now. It's a really tight corridor. And so there's a lot of traffic control, a lot of flagging. And just trying to maintain you know, some orderly calmness during the construction.
And then next
Jeff, how many cars did you say go through there a day?
So our traffic count was 15,000 cars a week.
A week.
Even even during COVID. So it's a lot of cars that that use this road. And so next summer, there will be a period of time where we will close the road completely. We'll be working really closely with our contractor and our consultants in the community to come up with a plan to try and keep traffic from cruising through the neighborhoods to get around. And so we've got some work to do between now and and next summer. But I think with a lot of communication and outreach and listening to folks' concerns, we should be able to make it through that. And then that's the probably the hardest piece of the project is to get that done next summer. And then by the end of summer, barring zombie attack or something zombie apocalypse, we should be open to traffic and have a shared use path on one side and having much nicer facilities.
Can I just interrupt for a second and say that Counselor Reyes has her hand raised, her electronic hand raised? Did you want to make a comment, counselor?
Counselor, you're muted.
I'm trying. Sorry, I'm trying, but I'm muted. Sorry. I was talking and no one could listen. And so the famous video of Counselor Kellogg breaking ground, would that be uploaded to the website on Twalton moving forward?
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be taking, as Megan was mentioning, we'll, we'll take the whole video section of this part of the council meeting of the tour and put it up there and also make it available in smaller chunks on social media and various other places.
And I realized my question came in really late since my virtual hand up was, you know, kind of late. So thank you anyway for answering that question. And I'm just, I'm not on video today. I have bad hair day. So just gonna see you guys and raise my hand virtually. But thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So our next stop and our last stop, excuse me, tonight, is Boons Ferry Road at Twalton High School. Number nine is also my lucky number. I don't know if that means anything, but you know, it does to me. So and I will be your tour guide for this one. So this project is another pretty exciting project. It looks a lot different now than it did when we took these photos. Also, they are going pretty darn fast. So this one builds a new sidewalk along Boons Ferry Road and a crosswalk with rapid flashing beacons at Alabama Street to get across safely across to the high school. We also, because we had a contractor coming out here to use this work, we bid this project with our payment maintenance program this year. So we're doing a big overlay along a lot of Boons Ferry all the way up past Sagert Street. And so we have the same contract contractor doing that work. And here are some photos of the project being constructed. I believe if you go out there now, you will see much of this complete. We have not done the overlay yet. So we were cruising along just fine. And then all of a sudden, we took a week off for this weird thing that I don't know if it's ever happened in Western Oregon called a wildfire smoke that shut us all down. So we we paused for a week. It felt like a year. It was really only a week, but they are back at it. It's supposed to be really nice weather this week. And so our hope is that they will get the majority of the work done this week and next week. So but you can see we're, this is looking north along Boons Ferry and you can see the new pedestrian crosswalk and the island refuge to keep folks safe as we're crossing this road. This is one of our busier roads. And then there will be new curb ramps on each side, rapid flashing beacons. Down in the lower left hand corner, I just pointed with my hand, which I'm certain you can't see. There is some artwork. So there's some sidewalk art by Allison Crainer called Sun and Moon. Placed here, I'm not sure if you have a picture of the actual place work, but that's the the art that the stamp was made from. And another piece of art out there is called Wolf and Al. And I don't know if I'm going to say her name correctly, China Hater. And here are the contractors. Right here, this is Jackson Industries that are a contractor out there getting ready to pour the concrete, place the stamp in in the sidewalk. And here they are again, doing some more work and they have just placed this stamp. And that is the original artwork, Trigger Skull by Maya Payne. And it's Uma's clearly Uma's favorite. Laying down on it, I took her out and let her go figure out what sidewalk art was, took some doggy selfies. Got it. That's my hand, shadow of my hand in there. So that's my claim to fame right there. And that takes us to the end of the tour. So if we're on the bus, we'd be pulling back into the library parking lot, getting off the bus, laughing a lot, talking a lot, maybe eating leftover pizza. So since we're not on the physical bus tour, I'll hand it over for questions, comments and suggestions.
Thanks, Jeff. Questions for Jeff or Kelsey?
Yeah, I have one.
Sure, Paul.
So a couple of questions and a comment. The crosswalk in front of Twelton High School, we always and right now, I'm really missing Counselor Joel Davis. We had pushed for a long time to get one on the north parking lot as well. And I know there's no construction there. There's nothing started. Is there still plans to put one on the north lot?
So we we went down that road and we did the design and then some some things changed out there, which changed how the the students were crossing the street. So when we first started this, there was an opening in the fence through the condominium complex there. And so a lot of folks were essentially darting across the street there to use that opening. Since that time, that opening has been closed. And so that's no longer a route for students to take. And we updated the signal at Sagert Street to make to basically provide a leading pad interval. And so it seemed well, when school was going on, it seemed to be working pretty well. So we paused in that north crosswalk. And then if it turns out that all of this doesn't change habits and we we still need that crossing there, we would go back and look at that. But at this point, it seemed like before school ended for the pandemic, it seemed like students were essentially going up and using the signal because it it worked well and there wasn't a shortcut anymore by cutting across early.
So yeah, my observation was, and I respect your answer and I appreciate your answer because I think if it does fix it, because there's actually another change that happened when they repaved the parking lot, which if anyone hasn't been out there, both north and south slots have been completely redone. And they've placed a walkway right up next to the fence, next to the the church office there that may cause the students to that. But what they were doing was if they missed the light, then they were just walking down to the parking lot and then still cutting across and the traffic up to the pandemic, to the time of the pandemic, the traffic was still pretty heavy there, especially in the afternoon. Kids coming home just go across that part. And that would be what I would recommend you look at is when things get back to normal. It's at the end of the school day, they come out of the school and rather than go down to the intersection across, they just cross at the parking lot because they're just going down a ways. They then cross it at I Buck. There's a heavy flow of traffic there. And I don't know if we'll ever have the the ability to put in a crosswalk there. Oh, that would be high on my list to put a crosswalk as well in in my little wish bucket. The second question related to Twelton High School is, is there any thought to putting a light marking the crosswalk at Iowa Drive?
So we will be back in I think the second meeting and I'll go over to talk about our neighborhood and traffic safety program for for 2021. So that was one of the projects that was on the list of suggestions. I don't know if it if it made the shortlist for this year. But it would be one that we we would look at coming back potentially.
Okay, perfect. Good answer. Thank you. And then finally, historically, Jeff, we always do a top 10. There's the top 10 on ESPN if you're a sports fan. And I would add to your top 10 list, of course, the one that and Counselor Kellogg was instrumental in assisting me when I was just a novice on how to get involved with our city government and our homeowners association, which originally asked for, because it had been promised by the developer, the crosswalk at Dogwood and Grants Ferry, which is under construction. It's coming along nicely. It's looking great. And thank you. Thank you very, very much for those of us who live in that neighborhood and the people who live across the street who go down to a trailway that crosses through that watershed area behind Victoria Gardens, go up into Victoria Woods and go over to the high school and do the trail that is there between Byram Elementary and Twelton High School. So that's my top 10.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Can't see everybody. So.
Oh, hey, thanks, Dave.
I'll say so.
Valerie?
Oh, I just want to thank you for the tour and the cookie and the bucket and the dirt. And I'm just so excited, like Robert, that Garden Corner Curves, it's such a and the high school, there's some of these that are just so great and gonna be so helpful for the safety of our community. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I just got two quick ones, Jeff and Kelsey. One, the new speed feedback mechanism on Twelton Road. Has that fully been configured yet? Because you're getting some weird results when people drive by.
It is, it is not. So we Mike McCarthy reached out to the contractor today to let them know that it was not reading correctly. So they must have just installed that.
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, just.
All right.
That'll be part of their punch list to get that right.
Yeah, because I'm hearing from the folks in my neighborhood here, you know, a lot of us are laughing at the feedback and stuff and that they're not in sync with what this limit is and what you should be doing and stuff like that. Great. The second thing is, what's the status? The second thing is, what's the status of the light on Twalton Road in Teton?
So that project is coming up. So we just met a few weeks ago with our bond team to talk about sort of this next round of those big projects. And so that one will be getting started. And what we can do on the neighborhood traffic safety program is maybe also bring a list of those kind of a reminder of what those projects are that are coming up and give you a status update on sort of how we're how we're moving those projects forward. Should start design next year.
Yeah, gotta be great. Because again, the folks that live around Twalton Road or that's the one they're interested in. And now the the speed feedbacks time.
Yeah, sorry about that. It wasn't upside down.
And people are noticing it. That's a good thing.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
So moving on to item number two, which is regulation of marijuana facilities in Twalton. Who's lead? Is this Aquila?
Yeah, this is me. I mean, yes. Hi, Aquila. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to give you a brief update from the webinar that we conducted on September 16. And so I'm going to share my screen. Let's see. Get this set up properly. Can I get that set up properly slideshow? There we go. All right. So these are let me back up. You don't have a presentation in your packet. These are basically a few slides taken from the webinar. Just just to kind of give you an update. So on Wednesday, September 16, we had a Zoom webinar where people came in and I don't think they had to register. I think they just had to get the link and pop in and Megan George was very helpful in being the tech person and Steve Cooper was there and Aaron Eggman and it went fairly smooth. So let me get into it. So what we talked about is what's allowed now in through our marijuana ordinance. So right now, what's allowed is that marijuana facilities are allowed in the industrial zoning districts. And they have to be 3,000 feet from other use uses such as schools, libraries, parks, and residential areas. And they have to be 2,000 feet from other marijuana businesses. And there's more regulations of marijuana businesses in Chapter 80 of the Development Code. So the proposed changes that that we heard from council over the past several months, maybe going all the way back to January even. The proposed changes are to allow some marijuana facilities in retail areas. So allow the dispensaries or the the retail marijuana facilities and commercial zones, but not the central commercial. And that actually has to do with buffering. So I can, you'll see that in a minute on a map. And then all the other types of marijuana facilities would continue to be allowed in industrial zones. Another change is to reduce the buffers from to 1,000 feet, from 3,000 feet to 1,000 feet from other uses. And those that list uses remains the same. And then the final change would be to reduce the separation distance from 2,000 feet to 1,000 feet between marijuana businesses. And that actually would be to match state law. So we went over that and I thought some people might be wondering, what does that look like? What do those changes look like? Where 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 can a business go now? And where could they go with these proposed changes? So we went through some some maps. And so let me set some context here. If you joined us that night, I showed a picture of a moose, very cute moose that I named Twali. And our city can take the shape of a moose. And sometimes we will talk about a use being in the antler or in the nose. So anyway, we set some context that way. So this is our entire city. We've kind of meshed some of the zones together. So all of the residential is yellow. All of commercial is pink. All of industrial is blue. We haven't differentiated in between, you know, what types of industrial or commercial. And then so just for context, here's I five over here on the east side. We've got Twalton Sherwood Road in the the middle here and Boons Ferry Road north and south in the middle. And so the red the red line and the red hash marks, these represent what 3,000 feet looks like from the library, parks, schools, and residential planning districts. So the yellow represents where a marijuana facility could locate today. And as you can see, that's in industrial only. So the next slide, then with this map, it shows what a thousand foot buffer looks like. So now now you're seeing that the red buffer area, which is 1,000 feet away from the library, parks, schools, and residential zones. And the the yellow area represents where marijuana facility could locate. And you'll see that this area up in the antler. It is a commercial area that could allow for a marijuana facility, commercial and a little bit of industrial with these proposed changes. And these buffers actually just take out where oh, excuse me, where did my mouse go? Here we are. These buffers just kind of automatically take out central commercial, which is this area here. This little green spot is the lake, the commons, the lake of the common. So just again, for more context. So we we went through that. We showed that what that looked like. And then we went into a question and answer slide and Erin Eggman, our associate planner, did a really nice job of going through some of the questions and comments that came in and kind of reporting out, reciting them and answering some of the questions. And so what we did is collect questions and comments from that night. And those are in your packet right now. And then all of this has been put onto a webpage. And those comments and questions are actually up on the webpage. So somebody could look and see if their question or comment was collected. And if somebody else has a question, it might be answered in that in that document. So I tried to kind of summarize some of what we've heard. And so what what we heard in terms of questions, generally, you know, why the proposed changes, what practical purpose does do the changes serve? Why not allow in the central commercial zone, which I kind of just touched on with the the buffering? There was a question around if other cities in Oregon exceed the state minimum restrictions. And we'd have to do some research to to answer that, which we haven't done at this point in time. And there was a question about if we have dispensaries showing interest. The interesting answer to that question is that since 2015, which is when our our regulations were adopted, we we have heard from interested dispensaries wondering where they can locate. For context of how much have we heard? I I couldn't say it's not. It's not an overwhelming amount. But we do get, we do get some interest. Some of the comments that that came in generally supported the kind of historic or the current ordinance that we have. We heard some comments about the proposed changes not being good for the city. That reducing the buffers are not in the best interest of the city. We there. There was a comment or two via social media that was in support of the changes. And again, you have you have the full the full questions or comments in your packet. So the next steps, actually, we're here tonight on September 28, reporting out. And then depending on what you decide to do tonight, if if you decide to pursue an amendment to the code, if you give, if the council gives staff direction to do that, the next step would be to go to Planning Commission on October 15 with an amendment and then return. So the Planning Commission reviews and considers the changes, and then they make a recommendation back to you to counsel. And then that public hearing happens on November, would happen on November 9. So if if that's the if that's the choice of the council. And I think, yeah, that's actually the end of my short presentation there.
All right. Questions for Aquila? Valerie first and then Bridget.
Um, yeah, cool. In the commercial zone, like I guess that the above where the I would be on the moose.
Thank you.
I was kind of trying to use my fingers and look at this early. And I'm I'm wondering like on that map, what 1,000 feet, the like 1,000 feet, like, would there be room to put two dispensaries in that area or just one? I mean, with if we reduced it to 1,000 feet.
That's a good question. Let's see. I'm going to bring that map back up for a second. Okay. I feel like this is always a test every time I share this. All right, let's see. And oh, I know what's happening. Okay. Okay. So you're asking about this map and then you're asking about this
Yes, that pink.
area up in here.
So what's 1,000 feet like?
I don't. So, okay. So this circle right here is 1,000 feet because this little flag is a school. And so this is 1,000 feet buffered around that school. So I were to take that circle and put it here, maybe there's one.
Most of it. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Valerie. All right, Bridget.
Let's see, which should I go back to faces or would you like the map?
No, I like the faces.
You like, okay.
I like the faces. I, um, well, I just wanted to first thank you. I did stop in on the webinar when you hosted it. And I like that was direct into the point and I was able to also refer other people to it, you know, and they're not spending a half hour going through it. It's just 15, 20 minutes of time. And so I appreciate that. And it was very clear. Honestly, the questions that I heard come through were people wondering why we were limiting it, the ones that came through verbally. So that was interesting to me. And I don't see reflected here. But I wanted to point that out. I I had one other as we're talking about policy, and I don't know if anyone else has thought about this. But I was just thinking about this the other day. Questioning why we use the term marijuana instead of cannabis. And I think that because we're thinking about things with more diverse diversity, equity, and inclusion lens that we might think about how we talk about this particular policy in my mind. Just with the history of the word and how it came about. Especially in a policy discussion. So it's just something I hadn't really thought about it and just came up. And I've seen a couple. Then I did some research and saw a couple of articles about utilizing that more, I think, specific Latin nomenclature for our policy. Just something that I just want to put out there to consider. That's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Other questions for Aquila? Robert.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm going to save the political statement for the council meeting when this is up. But on a policy basis, 80 dot zero six zero, and I'm looking at the page from our packet that's got the marked up ordinance. 80 dot zero six zero sub four contains prohibition on a marijuana facility cannot exceed 3,000 square feet in size. And my mindset on this thing the entire time has been more about the industrial uses, the grows, the dries, the wholesalers, the warehousing. And I don't see any particular policy reason why a facility couldn't exceed 3,000 square feet. In fact, I think that's going to exclude a bunch of these industrial uses that would be good tenants in the industrial areas. And then also there would be none of this, you know, public facing part of it. It would just have a sign on the front of the building like every other industrial building back there. So I'd like to ask the rest of the council to consider striking sub four of 80 dot zero six zero.
I can't remember why 3,000 feet was picked way back when, but there's this, I guess, a question for Sean. Is there anything in the state ordinance about size of facilities that we're trying to emulate or something?
I'd have to go back and look. The it's certainly not at the industrial level. I believe there are some limitations on on the retail side, but I'd have to go back and look at that, but not on the industrial.
All right. So Robert, you're asking for it to be that we think about it if this goes forward with in you want to change now or you this is later when we possibly consider this at city council?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like, you know, for the planning commission to pass on it. So if we can make the change, you know, between what's on my screen now and what's proposed to the the planning commission, then I think that would give us a more thorough process. But if that is somehow unworkable, then can bring it back up in the council meeting.
Okay, other questions?
Mayor, you may not be able to see it, but Councilor Reyes has her hand raised.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, not a question, but a comment. I feel that the work that the staff has done, thank you, Aquila and your team for doing that, has been outstanding in trying to gather information. And I'm glad that we're looking at this very thoroughly. I still feel that the voters have spoken a while back and that that is their voice. And we have to honor that. I also think that we are, we in Twalton are very careful. I feel like our community is very balanced and and I feel that it is something that that should as I say, that I like how Counselor Brooks brought up a different term because it does make a difference when you speak about it because it's not just the marijuana plant that has the THC level, but also there are other medicinal parts of it. So I feel like that's really all what I'm listening. Well, I guess what I'm trying to say is that my comment is that I really commend the staff for doing this work. And I think I'm ready to to move forward and because it has been a long time and we have linger with the same case over and over and talk about it. And we keep sending staff to do things and they do it. And then we come back and then we send them back. So let's just think about the time that we're using the staff just just specifically on this topic. Is it? Is it? I mean, there are a lot of things that we can be working on. And like I say, the voters have voted. They've made their voice. They they spoke. And we need to honor that. So thank you.
So Councilor Reyes has led us into the discussion phase of this. So discussion. I saw Bridget, then Council President Grimes, and then Valerie.
Um, I too would like to move forward. I would like to really consider changing the terminology with the support of other people to cannabis rather than using marijuana and without any problems with Counselor Kellogg's suggestion around industrial. suggestion around industrial building size. I don't have a problem with that unless there's something that I'm missing.
Council President Grimes?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I don't have a problem with referring to this as a cannabis discussion. That's, that's fine with me also. And that way, if there's any negative stereotypes or anything that comes into the discussion, we can set those aside. To a point that everyone was asking about the 3,000 foot restriction on the growing sites. I believe, as I recall back when we were having the discussion, part of that thinking was that, you know, we have not an unlimited amount of industrial space. And I think what counselors were thinking at that time is if we had in like an enormous warehouse come in for grow operation and you have a bunch of that space, that there wouldn't be, it wouldn't be creating a commensurate number of like living wage jobs. It would end up just being a giant sort of warehouse housing facility where you might have just a couple of people coming and going to check on the work, but that we wouldn't be creating, you know, all these living range jobs in Toowalatin to cut down on commute and all the other things that we see coming in and out of the city. And so I think that was part of the thinking that went into that is like trying to, you know, accommodate the industry and make opportunities available, but then also balance that with what, you know, we're trying to see growth wise in the city. I completely agree with Counselor Reyes that, I mean, the voters have spoken, I mean, absolutely. They've legalized, you know, recreational as well as medicinal cannabis. So I agree on that point, but I also feel like we can't not listen to all of the people that have written, have come to council meetings who have had opinions as well. I mean, they are voters, however they may have voted, but you know, we have the comments from the meeting the other day, but we don't have in this packet, all of the comments of, if you recall, all of the people that were coming to the city council meetings at the beginning of the year before the whole COVID shutdown, we had, um, golly, I mean, what did we have? 30 people at a council meeting giving testimony, turning in letters, being involved. Robert, I see your mouth moving. But I just want to remember those people too, that came in, you know, as well as, you know, get all that comment in the public record because I think that's important also. I don't have a problem with changing our 3,000 foot radius to a thousand foot to make us match state law. I don't have a problem with that. But I would like to keep the zoning so that the acceptable areas are down and around the industrial area, which I guess would be the neck of the moose. I don't support at all, um, opening up areas up around Bridgeport and up around I-5 with the easy access there. I think that we can compromise and come up with something that would make the community feel comfortable and would also enlarge the opportunities for a retail facility just by, you know, cutting down our separation requirements, making it match state law and increasing the area that's down there without having to open up other areas to those businesses. So that's my input.
Thank you. Councilor Morrison? Oh, is it Valerie first?
Okay, sorry.
Valerie then Councilor Morrison.
I guess, oh, I left a couple of things. I wanted to respond to Counselor Grimes. The comments that might have been made before about the, um, living wage jobs and this is just anecdotal in my personal experience, but a couple of years ago, I was looking for a job and the jobs in that industry paid significantly more than other industries. So I just want to make that everybody aware of that. And also that we're, I really appreciate the comments people mean their concerns about cannabis, but we do have it allowed in our city where, you know, so I want to make sure we're clear that the argument's just about where we're changing or looking at the distances where we're allowing this, the areas and personally, I feel like it seems unfair to me that we're saying we're allowing retail establishments, but we're only allowing it in the industrial. Like if we're going to have a, it's, I think we should allow a little bit of our commercial area and with the way this map works out, we've just got a small area that's not near our downtown core. And I, I personally think that is a great compromise and what would be best for our city.
Right, Paul?
I think mouse problem, sorry. Yeah, my, well, first off, I want to comment on, on Council President Grimes comment because I do also remember, I wasn't on council then, but I participated in, in some of the, and attended some of the planning commission meetings and certainly some of the open houses. And it was, I think the, the idea was to, in our industrial area, what's little is left of it was A, to allow marijuana retail shops, cannabis retail shops, whatever word you want to use to allow them in that area. But at the same time, I think the city was looking for a more diverse industrial base as opposed to having a single company come in and take up some huge amount of square footage. And then Counselor Pratt, the problem is that yes, though they are high paying jobs, especially if you're working in the background in that industry. The issue was like, for example, on Teton Road, a large distribution center moved in, taking up what was at the time, the largest amount of square footage available for leasing in the city of Toowalatin. And they employ approximately, if I remember correctly, nine individuals because it's a distribution center that just doesn't require a lot of workers. And, and so I think that's kind of, I don't certainly want to put words in, in Counsel President Grimes mouth, but that was my recollection as well, that they wanted a more diverse base in that area as opposed to just, you know, 100,000 square foot taking up for a single entity. My other issue is, and I'm hearing, you know, a little bit from both sides and obviously you all know where I, I stand on this. I've spoken on it before. And, and my sole issue is I think it's a terrible legacy for this council to have a cannabis shop as the gateway to our city. And that's my only comment on the matter. I think it's terrible to have something like that in, in Bridgeport. We have worked so hard to get rid of jiggles. I think that a lot of individuals, if you asked for their opinion of whether or not, is there any way we could get rid of, of stars next to Burger King? I think there would be a high, a lot of raised hands that it's not the kind of image that we want for our city and the thousand foot to comply with state law, I will also comment on that. We have multiple ordinances on our books that are far greater than what is required by state law. State law sets the minimum. And basically what that means for those of you who seem to be confused by it is you cannot go down to 500 feet. You have to stay at a thousand, but you certainly have a right under home rule to go to a larger square footage. I mean, to a larger spacing between, whether it's a buffer, whether it's between shops, whatever that issue is, it does not have to be limited to a thousand feet. It just cannot be anything less than a thousand feet. So you, you've all heard my sermons in the past and I'll move on.
Any other comments, discussion?
I'm, I'm waiting for Sean to say something about preemption.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna mention one, one piece on the, on the buffer. So state law has preempted the cities. So what, we can't have a buffer between retail establishments larger than 1,000 square feet. So that, so we've been preempted by state law on that. Uh, the rest of it I would agree with.
I did. Okay. Uh, so just in response to the, um, I guess I'll start with the square footage piece. You know, someone had mentioned, I forgot who, that, you know, I think it was Paul that, that mentioned, you know, we've had distribution facilities out in the industrial area that 90,000 square feet and they've got 10 employees. Where I'm coming from, from with the cannabis facility that would be, you know, a wholesaler or something like that where they, they take product from the farm, they trim it, they package it. And then, you know, put it on a truck and, and sell it. These aren't small businesses anymore. The, the industry is consolidating, sales are through the roof. And I've got, you know, personal knowledge, not that I'm doing it, but, but a friend that is in this industry and does sales, they make well over six figures a year on a commission base for sales. So, you know, the idea that these are going to be minimum wage jobs and very few of them, I don't think is, is accurate in any way. Secondly, just as an overall statement and, you know, I don't want to make this any more difficult than it has to be, but, but the purpose of this measure is not to increase consumption. I don't think anybody sitting here wants more consumption, right? What we're trying to do is provide a legitimate scheme for, you know, legal businesses to cite in our city. And we've taken a good whack at, at knocking down the buffers to, to, you know, what is pretty much the market around the state. And we're going to open up a greater chunk of our industrial area. I would presume that, that some good businesses that will pay taxes and, and provide good jobs are going to come into there. Uh, and I don't see a retail shop, um, you know, at the exit up there as, as a, a huge stain on our city. I mean, there are significant regulations at the OLCT level about advertising, you know, they can't have, you know, a giant joint smoking on a sign, you know, to draw people in. It's, it, it's nothing like that. And if you've driven around and seen some of the advertising, you know, or some of the signage at some of these places, it's a little kitschy in some places, but it's definitely not provocative. So again, I, I'm not too worried about the image piece of this and I'm really excited for the economic development aspect of it.
Other comments? I'll weigh in. I'm supportive of the change and of Counselor Kellogg's requested change about the size restriction on operation grow operation. What I've seen from one of our clients, my, my private side has a grow operation up in Woodland and they can't hire enough people. They are growing tremendously and they're paying top dollar. And it's not just one or two folks in a grow operation. There's 30, 40, 100 people in there because it's everything from growing to cutting to processing. Warehousing, it's a big deal. So there's quite a few jobs that result in a grow operation or a wholesale distribution. The other thing is I look over to our neighbors. King City has two facilities, both very well maintained, one right next to city hall in King City. Uh, and when talking to Mayor Gibson, no issues in his city. Same thing with Tiger, talking to Mayor Snyder with his facilities that are located along 99. No issues at all with criminal activity, all things that folks emails about via homelessness or crimes or distribution to minors, it's, it doesn't happen. Uh, and they're having no incidents of that occurring in those cities. So I'm fully supportive of asking or directing staff to draw up the change with those things we've mentioned, those things being the change of Counselor Kellogg asked about the max size of a grow operation. And then I guess there's a question for Sean, you know, swapping out the word marijuana with cannabis. I don't know if that's a big deal or not.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can certainly call it that. I think the, the state is moving towards that a bit, but it, it's still references, state law still references marijuana. So as long as we put in the, the ordinance that they mean the same thing, then we're fine.
Okay.
And just to clarify on the Counselor Kellogg suggestion, take out altogether a size restriction in the industrial. Is that what we heard?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I don't, again, Sean mentioned that perhaps there's something in the OARs or in statute about the size of a retail facility, but from my experience, I don't think anyone's building a, a retail facility larger than 3,000 square feet, but I may be wrong about that. I mean, real estate's expensive, so.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you for the good direction.
All right. So since this is not a city council meeting, oh, go ahead, Council of Grimes, Council President Grimes.
Thank you. And I, I'm sorry if this feels like I'm belaboring this week, but I just really feel like one of the best things about this council is how we respond to the community, we listen to the community. We respect and include community outreach as such a high priority in everything we do. And I just want to remind everyone, again, we've received more emails, more testimony at city council meetings. No matter when this has come up over the past three years, we've gotten more community input on this than we have on anything. And it has been overwhelmingly in any venue you look at, it has been overwhelmingly the community asking us to please not make big changes to the regulations that were set up in the beginning after the measures passed and the city council and the community together came up with a set of regulations for how the cannabis industry were going to be treated in the city. And I just, you know, if you want to talk about legacy, I think that that's another thing that's really important is that we respect the input of the citizens of the community. And up until the point that we had the Western states, people coming to the city council meetings, we had one community member come and testify, one, as opposed to, you know, I lost track on the other side of the issue. And I just think that it's very important to respect that input. And to keep that in mind, when you talk about creating some sort of a compromise between what was drafted a number of years ago and the changes that we're talking about making tonight. Because I feel like all of that testimony and all of those people, we're not giving them their just due by discounting their testimony for whatever reason. And I feel like a more conservative compromise really helps respect their wishes as well as our wishes to try to make more opportunities for that industry by increasing the industrial area. So I would just really want to reiterate that for people that I think that that's a very important thing that this council really hangs their hat on of being listeners and you know, compromising and working together with community foundations. And I feel like we have an opportunity here tonight to make a very safe compromise that helps everyone and respects everyone's input.
Right. I'll just bring up back when these ordinances were first drafted, that a statistically valid phone survey was conducted and the majority of residents were in favor of having marijuana facilities, cannabis facilities in the city. It was not against it, it was for it. So I just want to bring up that that survey is still out there from years ago that over 50% of the city residents were very much in favor of having cannabis facilities in town. Uh, and then another reminder is that we're not passing anything right now. All we're doing is asking staff to draft the ordinance changes, which will then go to our, our planning commissioners and then to us in the coming weeks. So we're not making any decision here. So there's still plenty of time for citizen involvement and citizen feedback. I think Counsel Brooks has her hand up.
I just want to be really clear, um, from my perspective as well. I do appreciate our citizen feedback and comments and I also recognize that people, some people are not going to publicly come out to the city council meeting to talk about this topic because there's so much stigmatization. So I want to say from a, um, perspective of me, um, just I, one of the questions I ask people in the community on a personal level, when I'm talking to constituents is about this issue, I ask for feedback directly from people that are not necessarily involved in the organized group that's been coming to council. What they think, people of all different ages and stripes and overwhelmingly people have told me that they are not opposed to these changes, especially how specific they are and that they're not in the downtown core. So I want to be really clear that I feel that I've been listening. And the other thing I want to say is coming from a behavioral health perspective, a lot of the concern is about illicit use. And I do think that legal access has shown to reduce illicit use. And the other thing is people have given me feedback about how we use these policies around reducing incarcerations and criminal justice issues. So there's a lot of different topics around this. And finally, I'm going to say one, and it's funny because I've worked with a lot of substance abuse, but when I was taking my training for pain management, because I had a lot of very sick patients that I worked with. One of the most clinically effective and safest treatments for pain management was cannabis. And considering the addiction issues that people are facing with other pain medications. Those are all things that I think about very, very seriously. And and also in, in agreement with what I've heard from some of the other counselors during this particular time of COVID where we are looking at job losses and economic needs of our community and and trying to keep that all in balance. But I just want to say that I appreciate people's concerns. I appreciate people coming to council. I will continue to listen. And I also appreciate the people that have come to me privately on their own accord, as well as their honest feedback with me when I talk with them specifically about this issue. Thank you. You're muted, Frank.
All right, thank you. So I guess since we're not in a formal city council meeting, I just ask those folks who would be in favor of requesting staff to draft this ordinance and get it over to the planning commission for their consideration. With those changes, we talked about namely being cannabis and substituting for the word marijuana and striking that one part of the ordinance. Have I covered the changes? Those two things. All right. So those, all those in favor of referring this on to staff to draft the ordinance, just raise your hand. If you can see my hand. So I got one, two, three, four.
My hand's up.
Okay, Maria's is up. Bridget. Okay, so I've got five. Those are against, raise your hands. Five to two. So Sherlyn, go ahead and move this along.
And I want to just clarify too, and the hand is half down because there are modifications that I'm willing to support. So it's not just a clear cut, take it all or take none of it. So, I mean, I am open to making some modifications, so. It's not really a five and two kind of a vote. More about sending it along. Remember, we're not voting today.
All right. So moving on, that is, so we got on item number three here, we're down about twenty minutes. So let's go ahead and review our city council agenda tonight. We've got two proclamations, one being for domestic violence awareness and one for emergency preparation. I will need counselors to read those. I'm assuming Counsel Kellogg will do emergency preparedness. And who would like to do domestic violence awareness? All right, Bridget. All right. So those are the folks doing that. Any questions on the consent agenda tonight? There are only two items on it. Any questions? All right. Okay, so we'll move on to communications. We got about twenty minutes. Maybe we'll finish them off. In the twenty minutes we have, maybe not. If we don't finish on, in, on time, we'll continue with our communications after the, at the end of our city council meeting. So I'll go ahead and start with Counsel Brooks.
Well, hi, council. It's nice to see everybody tonight. I just have a couple. I mentioned the the findings from, or the annual report for the Community Development Block Grant and that we receive money for the staggered street. So just a reminder on that. And then with, I had another lit meeting, which is that's that committee that is doing the planning around for Washington County for the metro housing bond. And I there were a couple of items. One is that we were third, they bunched us with Twelton in the, in the studies, but we were third listed, I mean, Tiger, Twelton, we were third listed in need around homelessness in Washington County as far as our area. So I thought that was interesting information for us to know. As people on this council realized, another thing they did was show us a map of where services are available for people. And in our area, Sherwood and Forest Grove, it's very noticeably that there's gaps in service centers for people needing help. And I think with the upcoming eviction issue, that's important to think about for us. Finally, they've asked us to help with our particular area. And I am representative of geographical diversity on this force. So I haven't totally formalized and finished the contribution. We have a very short window for getting community feedback. But what I've proposed is to put the formalized survey to be available to the city meeting that is happening on the thirtieth. Our Home, Our Health, I think it's at six PM. And I also plan on attending that. So I wanted to say that encourage other people and the community to attend as well if they have interest. And I think, I think that's all the ones. I did do PAB. I did meet with the Twelton Arts Advisory Committee and I, we were going over more planning things. But nothing, not too much to report there. I just want to thank them again for their contribution to the sidewalk art project since we were talking about that tonight. And nice seeing everybody. Thanks.
All right. Robert.
Yeah, just briefly, Mayor, I wanted to thank you for your response to Grace Lucchini and the Basalt Creek extension over to Boones Ferry. You know, I thought we got a very good response back to the county that clarified the city's position. I wanted to thank you for putting that together. And I also wanted to thank the county for their candid response that, you know, it was a, a more limited discussion issue and that they did realize that there are still several issues or at least objections to the current design and, and what's going to be going forward with that. So I, I, you know, again, want to thank you for being vigilant on that and just, you know, keep that in everyone's mind that that project is, you know, at least on track, even though they don't have the funding yet, they're going to keep looking for it. And that we need to keep it in our minds that we get the best possible project there to not only, you know, facilitate their goals of moving traffic, but also to protect the residents in that area. So thanks.
Thank you. Valerie.
We had our Twelton Community Police Foundation meeting today and we're going to have a raffle coming up. Now, the details aren't set yet, but it will be coming up. And we're going to specifically be doing the raffle because the police department, they're in need of four AED machines. And we want to help fund that because, you know, they're often, more often than not, our first responders. So that will be coming up. We'll have an article in the Twelton Life on, it will be published on October fifteenth. So there'll be information there and on social media. And also related to the police department, the school, Tiger, twelve, the school districts having a SRO community information session on Thursday from six to seven thirty, having to read it on the side here. And so it's in TTSDS schools.org and it's also on the Facebook page for Twelton Police. If you want to look up more on how to go into that Zoom meeting. And then last, I want to, I want to thank Boy Scout thirty-five because I went to the community garden on Saturday and they were doing a project to put in drip lines for a big section of garden that all goes to the Twelton School pantry. And then they let me know that they were also doing over at the Elks Lodge fundraiser, car wash for people that were displaced from the fire. So I just want to really thank them for all their efforts and great job they're doing to make us, our community better. That's it.
Great. Paul.
Yeah, thank you. I sent out an email to everybody. Oh, gosh, I think now it's been a couple of weeks on the C four meeting and the update was a lot of interesting things going on. And Mayor, I don't know if you ever were able to send a letter. If the group did, I never saw it. Maybe you might want to send that out to everybody for those of us who are keeping score. Because that's going to be a very interesting conversation. Also, just a reminder to everybody, if you want to get involved with Metro's public comment on their regional framework for you know, I lost my train of thought, regional framework for highway jurisdictional transfer. There's nothing in Twelton right now, as I stated in my email. However, this is kind of going to be the way they're going to follow that transfer. And at some point in time down the road, I would think we would want to get involved with Washington County and Metro and look at, you know, some of the arteries we have here in Twelton that we would like to have control over in the same way that we were able to work with Clackamas County and get Borland Road under our control, which I think will be a huge benefit to the neighbors up there and, and in the Bridgeport Elementary neighborhood, because we're already seeing some improvements to that road. The next big thing coming up for Metro and the big battle for Clackamas County, and I've not heard anything, Mayor, from Washington County on it. And they may, you may want to give a heads up to Roy Rogers next time you talk to him. They're going to, they want to replace the Metro South Transfer Station in Oregon City. Clackamas County has been extremely vocal that they would like them not to replace it, but to have a new location, so that there are two locations. That place is, for those of you who haven't been there, it's a, it's really nice and convenient. It's right there across from Home Depot in Oregon City, right along the railroad tracks. There's a recycling center for things like needles and there, and for paint and for some tubes. And then there's a transfer station to take unwanted trash that you have. I forget the exact cost, but it's pretty reasonable, like thirty-five dollars for up to a couple hundred pounds of trash, actually more than that, I believe. So that's going to be the next big thing. Commissioner Paul Savas and Mayor Knapp have both been extremely vocal on the on Metro's plan to just create a brand new location. And then the finally, of course, I do want to thank staff. I didn't make a comment during the work session, but a beautiful, beautiful piece of work on the bus tour. My only disappointment, and I can see Jeff is still there, is that on each slide you had the bus in the far right-hand corner, but none of our pictures were on it. And I was just sad not to see that because I agree with, I believe it was Counsel Brooks. That's a great picture of the bus with all of us in it. And a lovely presentation and a lot of fun. And I have my bucket here and my shovel. And I will do my own groundbreaking ceremony on the crosswalk out of Dogwood and Graham's Ferry Road. So, and that's all I have.
All right. Well, just following up, two things, Paul. On the Washington County side of the jurisdictional transfer, ninety-nine W is one of the roads that they want to transfer over and Washington County is not very warm about that idea. And neither is the city of Twelton, King City, or Tiger, very much interested in taking over ninety-nine W jurisdiction wise from ODOT, but that's, those discussions are ongoing. And as far as the new transfer station, Washington County is very much involved because they're looking at doing it out near Forest Grove. The mayors of Sherwood, Forest Grove, and Hillsborough are adamantly against it being developed out there because part of the expense of building that is millions and millions of dollars. And Metro said they would raise tipping fees drastically to pay for it. So the mayors in that section of the county are not interested in it and don't want to pay for it and have been fighting Metro. Metro has not been very transparent, if you will, on this process. And so they are fighting it. It is bringing, being brought up at the Washington County Corrifying Committee. And so the, we are looking at it. It's, it's one of those things where I guess we're not getting a lot of response from Metro from repeated requests, but eventually they're going to have to, especially with the amount of money they're talking about and a rate increase that would be distributed to, out to all our residents who have garbage pickup. Okay, so on to Counsel Reyes.
Not much going on with, with my meetings. Other than I'm really excited to start our committee, oh my gosh, committee council advisory, committee advisory committee. I can't even remember the name of it because it's been so long. I think it was February last time we met with the, with some of the people that wanted to join our committees in the city. So I'm glad we're starting that all over again. And I think it's Monday, next Monday. And so I'm excited about that because it's been a long time. I think it feels like ages. But yeah, not a lot going on with any of my committees. So pretty quiet. But thank you all for your time and thank you all for just always caring for the community.
Thank you. I'm circling back to Counsel Kellogg. He forgot to promote an item for the Historical Society.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I believe it's October eighth. It coincides with an event they're going to have Zoom YouTube type presentation from a cowboy poet. But they are raising money because they're not able to hold their in-person fundraiser for obvious reasons. So if you're interested in helping out, they have a raffle. You can call Cindy at the Historical Society and order a ticket to support them in their endeavors. Thanks, Mayor.
All right. And finally, it's kind of a light week as in terms of light, two weeks in terms of formal meetings, but lots of informal meetings and phone calls. I sent you all the feedback or the summary, if you will, the Washington County Chair Mayor meeting from the twenty-first. On the twenty-fourth was a Friday, Thursday, Thursday last week was the multiple meeting day. The Metro Mayor's Consortium met in the morning and discussion there was reviewing Governor Brown's vetoes of some funding changes that were made to the state budget and the impacts on the state, the cities, the county. And I guess potential challenges to her authority to line item veto those funding changes. Then we had the Small Cities Consortium GPI meeting, Greater Portland Inc. I sent you all the slides of the review, the status of childcare in the Portland Metro area. And it's shockingly, I'm not going to say poor, but a challenge for parents and most parents, I mean, pretty much all parents know the challenge, one, in finding childcare, two, in affording it. And three, with the changes due to COVID, how do you get, you know, your kids involved and attending? And the challenge for cities and counties in the region to have childcare so that folks can go to work and get back to work. And, you know, is making this a regional priority to a staff to increase the availability of affordable childcare. And finally wrapped up the day with the board meeting of the Twelton Chamber. Very successful golf tournament that went very well. So they're doing, they're chugging away and there's movement afoot about maybe consolidating chambers across all of Washington County. They have just one Washington County Chamber of Commerce. So all the different chambers inside of Washington County are part of those discussions to see if that's something they want to do. Then on Monday. Then on Monday, I mean, all of this is a blur now, no, it was Friday, I gotta look at my calendar, TriMet held their HB two thousand seventeen meeting, and part of that is I testified as well as Garrett Pryor and Susan Nowak on the need for continued funding for the shuttle service that we have here in town, and possibly to increase it with the changes that we need from Clackamas County in mind. It went very well, we each covered all the points we needed to cover, and we had the floor to ourselves, there were no other public comment, and I guess it's rare that they get any public comment, so hopefully we'll stick in their heads about when they do the budget for the forthcoming year. I got an email back from Commissioner Savas, who very much appreciated our support for the Clackamas County Initiative and the shuttle service down Borland Road, he specifically mentioned that Council Morrison needs to keep it in their heads at C4, how much interest Twelton has in it, and our full support for it, and anything we can do to get that financing lined up to make that shuttle service possible sometime in the next couple of years down Borland Road. I think that's all I have, so we've got four minutes left for a little break, so we'll go ahead and wrap up our work session meeting for this evening, and we'll reconvene the city council meeting in about three minutes. We'll see you then.